We'll call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order and ask that please call roll.
Mr. Waldridge?
Present.
Mr. Tippett?
Here.
Mr. Wisman?
Present.
Mr. Sauer?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. And I guess first item would be, we have some, I believe we have some citizen comments, correct?
Yes, correct.
Alright, so we can ask that those please be read.
Okay, you're with me here. Okay. Okay, the first one is regarding the Boxcar PR firm. And the comment is, "I saw this item on the agenda, thinking it was a future endeavor. I did not realize until I read in the State Journal that this company had already been hired and performing work for two months. I do agree that the mayor has certain authority and powers during the current state of emergency. However, I feel that what work Boxcar has performed so far could have been done just as easily and competently." "There have certainly been many challenges and needs during the pandemic. I don't think that a public relations firm would have been at the top of my list. Being that there was no immediate threat to loss of life or property, this need should have been brought before the Board of Commissioners for consideration." And that was from David Hecker.
Okay, thank you.
I've got, I've got a few more here. This next comment is regarding the TIFF Development District. "I support the expansion as well as moving forward with the TIFF process. We must not delay the projects proposed for both the parcels or the future of the old Simon Warehouse building on Broadway." The next one from that, it's from actually the same person, is regarding the COVID fund update. "The information regarding donations and how these donations are being handed out to our community should be documented on the City of Frankfurt website. Transparency is important, especially when the public can't attend meetings, ask questions, or have an in-person dialogue." And I think I have just a couple more here. This is again regarding the PR marketing for Boxcar. "What is your funding for the citizens of Frankfurt? What is the procurement process for something like this? And was that followed? Why have the citizens of Frankfurt not heard of this expenditure until now? Has the budget been amended? Or was this included in the original fiscal year 2021 budget that was approved in June? I was upset to hear that the mayor pro tem is unclear of why Boxcar has a contract with the city." And I believe this is the last one. "COVID emergency update, thanks to all city staff for their extra work and dedication during this pandemic." And those last ones were all from Lisa Unger.
Okay.
And I think that's all we have for now.
Have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I think there were some other comments, I guess they were deemed irrelevant to the agenda, that were letters of support for the city manager, is that correct? Is that not relevant to the agenda, Laura?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. The, we did receive some other comments. They are all related to a particular topic, a very specific topic. As we all know, the closed session right now reads as it does. It does not mention an employee by name. If there is public discussion, this is something I emailed all of you all about just a little bit ago. If there is public discussion to which those comments are relevant, then I do think that at that time, they need to be read.
Thank you. Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yeah, I would just, I don't know if this is appropriate, Mayor, but I'm gonna try now anyway. I'd like for the record to reflect that I sent the city solicitor, I believe, my response suggesting that they be read in the, in the beginning of the meeting. So if that would, if the record will just reflect that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I was gonna say too, I think, I don't have any problem with going ahead and reading them now, if there's no objection.
Mayor, I agree.
Anyone object? Okay, so, please read those.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't have hard copies in front of me, I have two computers here, I'm kinda back and forth on. So, okay, so these, all these will be related to Mr. Parker. The first one is, it says, "Whatever the issue is with Chief Parker, I would like to express my complete respect and confidence in his abilities as city manager. I have been very impressed with his handling of all matters that are included in his job. The problem I see is that the city commission frequently oversteps its role and tries to interfere with his management decisions. This has been proven to be very disruptive and divisive, and certainly shows how dysfunctional the commission has been operating. One glaring example of this is the city's insurance business. The very competent staff handled the vetting well, only to be thrown under the bus and having its findings ignored and overruled. Why were bids even requested if any firm outside Frankfurt was not going to be considered? What a peculiar, peculiar, peculiar position to put staff into to begin with. Unfortunately, the end result was our very competent finance officer abruptly resigning. She was doing an excellent job and very valuable asset to the commission. The same can be said for our former city manager. She was doing a terrific job, but don't you think it's time we ask, why do staff frequently leave? I hope the commission will not take a vote tonight on Keith's employment status, whatever the problem may or may not be. The issue needs to be addressed publicly and with transparency. Without the opportunity for citizen comment or input, it will be viewed as railroading and political, as so many of the past decisions have been considered. This is not the right time to be making such big changes." And that was from Margaret Doyle. The next one is, "If the rumors are true that the commission is attempting to fire City Manager Keith Parker, I hope there is just cause for this action. From my interactions with the city manager and what I have observed, I feel he's doing a great job under some very trying circumstances. Mr. Parker displays a great deal of professionalism, as well as great knowledge and love for this community. I don't know why, but I feel our city manager form of government has come under siege lately, and we as a community need to revisit the roles and responsibilities of all involved. It is my hope that cooler heads will prevail and we can get past this issue with dignity." And that was from David Hecker. "During my 30 years of being involved with City of Frankfurt officials, I have never written a positive statement on the behalf of, on the behalf of any government official until today. Keith Parker was hired with glowing recommendations from everyone and was voted unanimously by the Board of Commissioners. He immediately became our leader and has done an outstanding job. What he did not do is play politics and did his job as described in a city manager form of government. Unfortunately, doing his job meant that some egomaniacs, Board of Commissioners were rightfully left out of the loop, and now they're trying to remove him. If the sitting members of the current board are unhappy with this type of government, then attempt to change the system. Until then, let the man do the job he was hired to do." And that was from Mike Fitzpatrick. Okay, next one is, "I would like to tender my full support for city manager Keith Parker. We have someone who is looking to help Frankfurt grow into a vibrant city. Our downtown has improved dramatically. We have received the Tiger Grant to improve the Second Street corridor. Dolly Graham Park and Jennifer Hills Park are moving forward. East Main infrastructure has been replaced and improved. New restaurants locating downtown, too. We are seeing more traffic on the river. Future growth of Parcels B and C will greatly benefit our community. To make a change with all of this going on, plus throw in the coronavirus threat, it would be a horrendous time to make a change from our very effective city manager. The hands of the future city commission and mayor should not be tied for a year with this drastic change after such a short term, 17 months, as our city manager has had. It would take a year, time we cannot afford to lose, to get a new city manager up to speed on Frankfurt's inner workings, and it would also be a city manager the new commission had no hand in selecting. Personal grievances are absolutely no reason to make a change in city government leadership." And that is from Craig Blanton. Couple more. Okay, and this was, this is from Lisa Unger, this was a part of her initial comments. "I will say it again, transparency is needed. If there is an issue that rises to the dismissal of employee, referred to be city manager, shouldn't this be discussed in open session?" And again, that was Lisa Unger. And this is the last one I have. "I'm outraged if the news is true that the city government is trying to secretly oust a fine manager in Keith Parker. It makes no sense that we have a city manager form of government, but the government consistently seeks reasons to get rid of the city managers. It's simply mind-blowing that the commission couldn't, could not openly vote on people owning chickens before the elections, but they pull a chicken move by trying to get rid of Parker in secret. Government officials who employ these type of tactics can't expect my vote. A move like this should be done with full transparency." And that was Delvin, and I'm gonna say his last name wrong, and I apologize. Asso FIFA? And that, Asso FIFA, I was close. And that's, that's the remainder that I had, that's all of them.
Alright, thank you.
I have another question, please.
What's your question?
There were three letters of support, and then one from KCDC, one from the Chamber, and one from Tourism. I think they intended those to be read, but that's your all's choice.
Do you have those, City Clerk? Are they, were they submitted for city, citizen comment?
I do have those, Mayor, I think I'll have to find them if you give me a minute, but I can, I'd be happy to read those if you want me to.
I think we received them, I'll ask, if they weren't listed as citizen comments, I don't think they signed up, is that Ms. Roth's? I don't have a problem with it, but we can, when we've got them, I think we.
It would be up, sorry, it would be up to you all to decide whether or not you would want those read.
Was that their intention? I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
No, I'm fine with it, they can read them.
Okay.
Mayor?
Who's talking, Commissioner Tippett?
Yes. So, did we decide to have the, have the letters read? We did, okay. We might wanna, we might wanna make sure that it stipulated which entities forward these letters to the board, okay? Cause I, just for the record.
Okay, here we go. Okay, the first letter that I have is from the Chamber of Commerce. And it's actually from Carmen Inman at the Chamber of Commerce. And it's dated today to the mayor and commission. And it's regarding a letter of support for Keith Parker, city manager. "The city manager leads a diverse team of dedicated individuals, all working together to accomplish great things for our community. And Keith Parker has led the way with passion and dedication to ensure the best for Frankfurt. The city manager and staff are tasked with bringing policy decisions to life in the day-to-day operations for our community, and the mayor and city commission should respect staff members they have hired in leadership roles. A decision to remove Keith Parker by the city commission would be detrimental to the ongoing projects in which Mr. Parker is currently involved. Our community is at a serious juncture as we try to turn the tide towards progressive action to help our business economy grow. Another change at the city manager position would be a great loss of momentum and effort towards this end. The Frankfurt area Chamber Board of Directors implores the city commission to hold steady with Keith Parker and to let him continue to do the excellent job he's been doing." And then at the bottom, there's a, there's a note, you know, I think I should probably read that, too. "Due to the lack of transparency and short notice of this agenda item, we do not have all the facts behind the alleged effort to remove Keith. If there has been some confirmed impropriety involving misuse of funds or other inappropriate or illegal activity, the chamber reserves the right to withdraw its support." And that was the Chamber of Commerce again. Okay, the next letter is from KCDC, Terry Bradshaw, to the Board of Commissioners regarding letter of support for Keith Parker. "As the City of Frankfurt prepares to initiate the downtown redevelopment strategy, negotiate tax increment financing, assist with parcel B and C development, recover from a pandemic and economic crisis, rewrite legislation to assist local businesses, begin construction on the $12 million Second Street Tiger Grant project, expand sewer to South 127, implement a local foods, local places strategic plan, and establish an entertainment destination center. I believe we need the guidance and leadership that Keith Parker has continually provided us. I applaud Keith for his progress and ongoing commitment to the many stakeholders who are working to make this community a place to be proud of. He should be commended for his efforts to engage the public in activities of City Hall and for his vision, spirit of collaboration, and transparency as a community leader." We have already had three managers, three city managers, I'm sorry, in as many years. If Keith is dismissed, that number will be even worse. This is not the message we want to send as a community, and will certainly limit the quality of any applicants who might consider taking the position. "So while I empathize that personal negotiations are a delicate and complicated process, I believe that consistency and experience are central to our success. And we will need a great success in the coming months to create jobs and restore our community and businesses throughout the COVID recovery process. I'm certain Keith Parker is the best person to lead us in that process." And that was from Terry Bradshaw.
Is that it?
I've got one more, sorry, I'm trying to get back to here. Okay, the last letter that I have here is from Robin Antonucci, Executive Director of Tourism. And this is to the mayor and Board of City Commissioners. "On behalf of the Frankfurt Franklin County Tourist and Convention Commission, we wish to express our concern over the article in the State Journal published early this morning, Frankfurt City Manager Says Effort Afoot to Fire Him. While at this point, we have no idea as to the accuracy of this article, we do wish to take this opportunity to express our support for Keith Parker. Keith is important to many ongoing efforts that relate to the tourism industry. A few of these are: efforts to secure a TIFF for Parcels B and C, coordination with the YMCA in support of maintaining a presence downtown, efforts to develop a boardwalk along the river from Blanton's Landing to Ann Street, implementation of the master plan initiatives, efforts to improve wayfinding signage, development of the city's parks master plan, and development of a strategic plan for public art in the city. We hope that the State Journal article is not accurate and that Keith can continue to help our city progress. At this critical time in our city and with so many difficulties brought on by this pandemic, it seems that maintaining the experience and expertise we have is prudent. A change in leadership would likely result in delays to the efforts listed above, which have already been impacted. We are not aware of any improprieties that may be the cause of this article, and of course, if that is the case, we will fully support your decision." And again, that was Robyn, Robin Antonucci, Executive Director of the Tourism Commission.
Okay, that concludes that all of the, is that all the citizen comment, City Clerk?
Yes, sir, it looks like.
Okay.
There was one more. DFI just texted me, Renee Tru just texted me, said he sent a letter to the commission. I think he just forwarded to you, Sharmay, he sent it earlier in the day.
Yes, I do have one, looks like it just came in about five minutes ago.
Okay.
Do you want me to go ahead and read that one?
Why, because if it was there before four o'clock, that's the thing, because I think it was. So please, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, yeah, it was received at 11:23 this morning, I got it, so.
I guess I just, I got it later on, so. Okay, so this was to the Board of Commissioners regarding letter of support for Keith Parker, city manager. And this is from DFI Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated. "The City of Frankfurt needs the calm, steady hand of the very intelligent Keith Parker at the helm, especially as we climb out of the pandemic caused by COVID-19. Now is not the time to let personality conflicts get in the way of the continuity needed by Frankfurt to make real progress. From work on the downtown master plan, completion of the Tiger Grant construction, and passage of a TIFF district that could infuse the largest private capital investment ever for a community, we need Keith Parker's leadership. Having worked with Keith over the last year in a variety of capacities, Bourbon on the Banks and Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated, I have never seen Keith play politics. Keith always stays focused on moving the community forward through good government, not politics. At the rate the community goes through city managers, we, who would want to apply for the job? I implore the city commission to hold steady with Keith Parker and let him continue to do the excellent job he's been doing. With a lame duck city commission, please do not place the next city commission in an immediate emergency by not having a strong, smart, and knowledgeable city manager. Unless the city commission is aware of any impropriety involving misuse of funds or other, other legal activity, the Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated Board of Directors fully supports the retention of Keith Parker as city manager. Now is not the time to switch horses in the middle of the stream." And that was Renee Tru, who was President of Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated Board of Directors.
Okay.
And I believe that's it.
That's it. Commissioner Sauer, you sent an email from a, from Mr. McLean, was that supposed to be something that was supposed to be read? Are we, Commissioner Sauer, you unmuted, so? Hey Bobby, can you unmute Commissioner Sauer, or do I have a chance?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I heard your question. I don't think it's necessary to read that letter now.
I tried to be sure, since we're giving other people the chance, I wanted to make sure that we didn't.
I understand, sure.
Alright. Our next item would be agenda items.
Mayor, may I move that we go on into closed session? I can read the KRS here, if I may.
Absolutely, okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can hear.
Mayor, can I move that we go into executive session per KRS 61 subsection, or Section 810 subsection 1 subsection B, to discuss deliberations on future acquisition of real property related to economic development where publicity would likely affect the value of the property? And KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection G, discussion concerning a specific proposal regarding potential new business where discussions, open discussions, would likely affect the siting of the business? And per KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection F, personnel discussion which might lead to the discipline or dismissal of employee?
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wisman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer, is there any discussion? Not, all of us in favor, well, Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Sharmay, I will have to say no, as I am not prepared to go into closed session, as I do not have all information provided for me to be prepared to have a discussion in closed session. So I will have to say no.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Mr. Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, okay, we're in closed session. Alright, we're back in open session, all members are present. We needed to come back in to adopt some rules of procedure in addition to what we have in place, because we're in a closed session. So entertain any motion from any member of the commission.
Mayor, to, to establish those ground rules, I move that to the extent permitted by law, information discussed in the executive session tonight shall remain confidential until otherwise decided by the Board of Commissioners or required by law.
We're getting some delay there.
To establish these ground rules, I move that to the extent permitted by law, that's in the executive session tonight, shall remain confidential until otherwise decided by Board of Commissioners or required by law.
Bobby, why are we getting that playback? They're streaming. Staff was? Staff was? Is there where you can, can you mute the staff anyway?
It's the mayor. It's the mayor. He's watching it behind.
Mayor made a motion.
Okay, I've been muted. Okay, go ahead.
Did you hear my previous motion?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Sauer, any discussion?
Um, I do, yes, ma'am. Um, I do not agree with this. I think that this has been done where no information has been given to, definitely myself, but obviously other commissioners here have had information. But I'm not knowledgeable of what's really going on and why. And I just foresee why, if they're willing, if you're willing to put something on the agenda at the last minute and have three votes before you come into a meeting for a motion, why not allow people to hear what's being said? So I feel if, if it's that strong enough to hurry up and make a motion and put it on the agenda, I feel that people should be able to hear what you have to say. And I think Keith would probably agree with that and not really mind that people hear what's being said. And I think it's time for transparency on this, on why. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Awful question, Mayor.
All right. Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
No.
Commissioner Tippett?
Uh, I vote yes. I want to explain my vote, Mayor. Uh, I'm voting yes on the, on the laying down of the ground rules.
Commissioner Whistman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Um, I vote yes. And part of that's because we had situations with people sending messages while we're in closed session. And due to that, I want to clarify one thing since it was posted on the city Facebook page, the live broadcast. Commissioner Waldridge posted that Commissioner Sauer had called Bill. Uh, that was not this bill. He was calling somebody else about something else. Um, just wanted to clarify that Commissioner Sauer did not call me, not that there'd been anything wrong with it, but he did not call me while that meeting was going on, as was previously posted on Facebook page by Commissioner Waldridge, since that was done in a public, public forum. Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. I, I guess I misspoke on that, but let's be clear. We were on a break. We were not in the middle of a meeting or anything. We were on break. Everyone was doing bathroom breaks and there was not it. So I clearly see it was probably intentional. Now that I realize that, if that's truly what happened without pulling records, phone calls. But, um, yeah, it's probably intentional, but you know, here we are. Transparency is not a gift in our city commission, so. But I appreciate you clearing that up, Bill. And here we go on lockdown where we can't talk about what you guys want to talk about.
Neither's professional.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sauer?
Just for the record, to be transparent, I was on a conversation with Bill Borders, a resident of Shelbyville, Kentucky, telling him I won't be able to make the prayer session tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I saw you missing your prayer session.
That should have been one you made.
Mayor, may I move that we go back into closed session per KRS 61.81 subsection 1 subsection F, personnel discussion which might lead to the discipline or dismissal of an employee?
I want to clarify, did you mean? Zero.
Did I say it incorrectly? Yes. KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection F.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Whistman, second by Commissioner Sauer, is there any discussion? Do you know, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
I do not, and I will explain my vote. I think this is allowing the community not to have a say and know what's going on. And the community should know what's going on. Why hide behind closed doors? I think it's something that should be verbal. It should be out. The community should know. And if you're willing to take this step, you should be willing to stand by your words and your actions. Thank you.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Mr. Whistman?
Yes, and Mayor, may I explain or state that we will be taking no action in closed session? This is for discussion purposes only. We will only take action back in open session publicly in front of our entire community. So I vote yes to go into closed session to have those discussions, which is a state mandate to discuss personnel issues.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, and I want to clarify too that the city attorney will be in the meeting with us to, to monitor and make sure that everything is done in accordance with all book of the law. Not that there wouldn't be, but I have asked her to say we all agreed that she should stay. And we appreciate that. So we are going back into closed session now. And open session, all members are present. City clerk, you with us? All right. We're back in open session.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Uh, yes, you may.
I move to terminate without cause Mr. Keith Parker effectively the close of business August 24th, 2020 by 4:30 PM pursuant to the terms of his employment contract and further move that the severance agreement set forth by his contract shall be signed by the effective date. And then Mr. Parker must return, not return to work and return all city property effectively, effective immediately pending the effective date of the termination.
Motion by Commissioner Whistman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer. Any discussion? Commissioner Waldridge?
Um, Mayor, since this was, this was discussed in a closed session, however, I'm still unclear how we, as a commission, got to this point. Um, is there any information you can offer myself? Because I'm still, as I spoke, I, I'm still very unclear. I have no clarity in this situation and would really like some kind of clarity on how we got to this point for the community and myself technically. So just a little bit of clarity before we go into vote would be great.
We had a personnel discussion in closed session. And this is what the result was.
I know. I asked for what led up to this moment. It wasn't on personnel. It was what led up to us, what, what led to the group that got together to lead up to this moment for this vote.
As, as the commissioners' motion was made without cause, so that, that's all we can say under Kentucky law.
Thank you, Mayor.
For the benefit of protection of the city.
Yeah, thanks.
Welcome. Any others? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
I will have to vote no, and I'd like to explain my vote. My vote is a no. This is absolutely insane. I, I don't think that this should be going on. And definitely without cause with someone that has done such a great job for our city. Keith, I'm talking to you. You have done an excellent job for our city. I was impressed for you coming in, jumping in, getting things done. It's been great working with you. I am so sorry. I'm apologized and appalled by those that sit to my right and to my left that we're in this situation. The city backs you. I definitely wish you the best of luck in all of your endeavors. You have my support, not only just from a friend you have become, but also for someone that is trustworthy and someone that has done an absolutely wonderful job so far. I am so sorry that you were pulled into this mess. I guess we should have understood the, the votes that took place last time on hiring you. But no, the city and your people here in Frankfurt are supporting you. We have always supported you. And there is no cause for this, though it says without cause, there is no cause for this. Um, and I just want to further state that we spent this time, I'm still unclear, unclear, Keith, of what was going on as a city commissioner for this to happen, still very unclear. But I appreciate you. I thank you. And I look forward to seeing what you do next. And hopefully a new commission will come in and take over and maybe get you back if you also choose to, to do that. So, but thank you so much for your time. And I apologize that you got the brunt force of this commission of something that turned into greed, ego, and not being able to understand their positions and what their roles are. I clearly understood my role. I clearly enjoy working with you and working with all of the staff. So thank you for serving Frankfurt well, and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Tippett?
No.
Commissioner Whistman?
Yes, and I do thank you for your time, Mr. Parker.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
I vote yes.
Mayor, I'd like to have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, my question is, now that we have gotten this out there, what is our next steps? Because we're going to need an interim city manager. What is our next steps for that? For the city to understand what our process is now that we are not aware of having a city manager? Or maybe Laura could share on that?
Well, I believe we'll call, we'll have to call a special meeting to, to appoint an interim and, or an acting city manager. At this point, actually, Ms. Ross will be acting in that role until we can call a special meeting to get back together to make an appointment.
Um, may I have a follow-up?
Is it related to this, since we're in a special meeting?
Yes. Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. I apologize. You cut out. Um, Laura, so what happens? Is this going to be overbearing for you in taking this position as the mayor just stated? Um, in this situation and, and everything that we have going on with the city? He just said that it's going to go over on you to be that interim right now. Is that going to be overbearing for you?
If, if I could speak and clarify, I think that my understanding is that I would take on the role that's actually designated to me by order, which is when the city manager is not available for whatever reason, I temporarily step in, not the same as interim. That is a decision that you all, you all will need to make and make quickly, so. This is just the same as if the city manager were gone for a couple of days.
Mayor? I move that we adjourn.
I had more discuss, I had one more discussion.
Okay, well, only that Commissioner Sauer made a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Okay, it's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn?
Yes, I don't think that there's a time to adjourn until all questions are answered by all city commissioners. And I am trying to get clarity on which way we go for not only myself or city commission. And just because you guys have ran this entire meeting does not mean that you just adjourn because you don't want to hear what's being said by another commissioner. I've asked, I asked, I was asking Laura to make a clarity, and I was cut off by a mention.
Is it a motion to adjourn? Is that a debatable motion or non-debatable?
There's no debate. You, he cut me off before I was clear with what I was asking Laura.
Clarification from, from Ms. Ross.
Mayor, I'd actually, I'd actually have to look that up, and I will be honest, I don't have my parliamentary rules at my home office.
Okay.
Don't worry about it, Laura. They're digging us into a hole and shame on every one of you.
Okay, your, your remarks are out of order, Commissioner, not becoming of a commissioner.
Okay, well, that's a lot that I can say about the commissioners and the mayor on this call. Thank you.
Uh, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
No.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Mr. Whistman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yeah.
Absolutely insane. Sorry, Keith. Hang in there, buddy.